Thanks, Diane. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Monroe Planning Commission regular meeting of Monday, July twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three, seven oh one P M. I'll have Leanne. Paul Roll.
Commissioners present in establishing a forum. Okay, I better sorry about that. Okay, Commissioners present in establishing a quorum are Commissioners Walker, Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lockhart, Nugent, and Commissioner Lewis. Let us know she would not be here tonight.
Thank you. At this time, we allow public comments. Members of the community have three minutes to get in front of planning commission and talk about anything that they would like. Is in anyone in the waiting room? Okay. Move on to minutes from our June twelfth meeting. Any edits, Melanie, any edits or comments?
I move that we approve the minutes from the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thanks, Guss. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So we'll continue with old business item five. Kate's, this is our equity and inclusion in planning from the last meeting.
Thank you. All right. So this evening I have brought back my attempt of putting together the definition of equity for the city of Monroe. And doing my research, I came across some additional definitions that I thought might be helpful for you. On page six of eighty-seven of your packets, the new definitions begin at number six. And when I was going over this with Community Development Director Bailey, one comment he had when I was showing him where we had been and what we're trying to achieve. His concern was, well, because originally it was going to be the the city of Monroe would ensure all people have the means, but the city doesn't provide everything. And so he wanted me to come back with a little bit of a conversation with the planning commission. Do we want a pure definition? Or do we want a definition that talks about the city? Because the city does not control education. We don't control a lot of things that are part of the equity that are all encompassing. And so if we're, if you keep the definition as I put it together, which I think I heard correctly tonight, we don't need to have any more of a conversation. But if you want to do it as was discussed at our last meeting, it was implying that the city does something to ensure you have equity, then we need to have a little bit more of a conversation to really talk about the things that the city provides. We make policy on land use, we provide water sewer. We, we don't have control of the free market. And so there was just a little bit of concern. So first, I'll let you look at the new definitions again, starting at number six or ten. And then at the bottom of that is what I believe I heard at our last meeting. So I must start to stop there and just give you a few minutes to review the definitions and what I put together. And if that is what you remember our conversation.
But as we review this, we want to further refine it and define it in the realm of planning, correct? Because we don't speak on behalf of the entire city. We are just trying to define it as the planning commission.
So if you go with the definition as it is written tonight, we don't have to do any more explaining because it's a pure definition of this is what equity means for the city of Monroe. But if you add back in, the city of Monroe will provide the means to attain. That's where we need to have more of a conversation because we don't, we don't provide everything. We are, we have a finite policies and services that we provide. And so that's the distinction. If you go with what it is, where the city is not, we're not stating the city of Monroe shall provide X, Y, and Z for you to have. So, so we have equity. That's the difference.
Okay.
And then the reason I gave you the other ones is I thought some of them had some nice alternative language for your consideration.
Careful, when you're ready, it looks like we've missed your hand raised.
Oh, thanks, Leanne. I will begin to pay attention here. Liz, how are you?
I'm great. How is everybody doing tonight?
Good.
I mean, I kind of thought this needs some more refining because I was kind of reading through it and I'm glad it was kind of pointed out that maybe I appreciate Bailey's feedback because it after reading some of the other areas definitions, I I don't know personally, I liked number seven and number ten a lot better. Obviously with some adjustments, but I liked number ten probably the best just because it seemed to be I felt a little more neutral. I liked how it worded meeting the means of all people regardless of age, ability, gender, income, education, culture, or background. That to me just seemed to encompass such a wide variety of everybody. I don't know. But at the same time, I don't want it to also sound like we're forgetting anybody without being too specific. This is where I feel like it gets a bit dicey. I would have loved to have, I want to hear everybody else's feedback, but I would have loved to have also had Janelle's feedback on this because and if that would mean waiting another meeting, I hate adding more time, but I would really like to get Janelle's feedback on this. Just to get that added perspective from all of our commissioners. But I also liked a lot of the wording in number seven. Trying to remember specifically which parts, but yeah, because I really didn't like the part of ours that's talked about all people have the means. I don't know why I had the word means to attain. It just it didn't it, it just doesn't sound right to me, but that's just my opinion. So I will let somebody else speak.
I think they used means as a synonym synonym for ability. Ability to attain. So, right?
Yeah, this is the Pegetown Regional Council.
Number three, exactly.
That was the base for this one.
Randy, oh, Melanie.
Um, I, I'm a fan of ten over the one we're using. I agree. I'd like to hear Janelle's perspective because also while I understand what Lance's feedback and I appreciate that, there was other feedback that was given on combining with number three and some of the other ones that we had discussed. And as this stands, it was verbatim number three. And so in terms of the beginning, I still, I think the word that all people have the means is still putting onus on the people rather than defining what the city's role is. And so like in, second, let me figure out which one it was again, going back. At least with number four, with the revenue says like the city provides all community, community members with equal and effective city services. So like it specifies the city and what this in the city wrote. So that would naturally, you know, kind of omit a lot of what the school wouldn't be responsible for and stuff. So if we could combine some of that, but number ten, I, I like just the general definition here. I think it, it just states some of the same from some of the ones above that we liked. And then I'd ask maybe to consider at the end the last sentence and what's proposed. So which was number three. Maybe adding that but reworded slightly just because it is covered before, but adding that last sentence to the end of number ten. So it says communities of color, historically marginalized communities and those affected by poverty are represented and engaged in the planning, policymaking, and decision-making processes. I guess it could just be that sentence verbatim at the end. It just adds a little bit to it, I think.
Yeah, and there's not a timeline on this. So if you want to come back to that future meeting, we can definitely do that. And I expected it was going to take a couple. Yeah.
Thanks, Melanie. Brenda, let's go with you.
Okay, I agree. The one that we currently have, like the verbatim of the three is, I do feel like all of it's kind of written in like like a negative, you know, you can write in a positive means or a negative means. And it does feel like it's giving even sentence two or that they have opportunities to improve their quality of life. It's almost again puts that onus on marginalized people to be doing something instead of saying just defining equity. It doesn't feel like that's what we're doing. I, my favorites are the two four and ten. And obviously not using all of the words of all of those, that would be very long, but I do like where it's like proactively from to proactively adopt policies and take genuine actions to eliminate inequitable adverse impacts, facilitate access, that whole sentence. And I do like sentence one from number ten. And I like sentence one from number four. And I agree, we should continue to look at this and wait.
Jacob.
Kate, are you familiar with any of these sort of, and I know this is a newer subject, any of these definitions ever being held up in, in court? Because I read through them all and every one I see as a potential opening of liability for the city in terms of offering equal treatment to to everyone under the law. So
We are in new territory. This really comes out of Vision twenty fifty where the Pegetown Regional Council is making the policies in there are requiring that our public outreach be be equitable in nature. And then House Bill twelve twenty, twelve twenty passed in twenty twenty-one by the state is focusing specifically on housing. But these terms, this, this is where we need to figure out how to do this. There are some cities that are ahead of us, but I'm not aware of anybody being challenged in court. I can definitely reach out, but
And one of the, the particular questions that I have is just that again, virtually every one that was on here and, and obviously it's not just limited to these ones. All of them include a factor of subjectivity that can be left up to whoever the, the governing body or even in our case, a non-elected government governing body to making the decision upon who should and who shouldn't receive like there's a, there's a few words in here and a few of them are currently being considered. I mean, they all, they all just sound like they could be left up to a single person or a five or a seven person board to pick and choose who they see as marginalized. So I would just throw that feedback out there. I'd love to see that kind of.
So I, I can give you a little bit more information. The House Bill twelve twenty is very specific about parties that have been marginalized and they are getting at historically African-American communities and redlining. And that was a tactic to not allow people of color to live in certain neighborhoods. So they were very clear that there are certain populations. And it's also those who don't typically participate in meetings like rehab. So there, there is some guidance. And again, in the Pegetown Regional Council, they also have more information. So it's not, it's not just open to anybody. I'm wondering if I might be able to be, give you some more resources.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
So Jake in banking, it's the Community Reinvestment Act is what she's talking about, the redlining where
Right.
banks wouldn't lend in different areas. And so the federal government tried to fix that so that they would have some sort of equity and ability to finance those homes. So we are talking about something a little bit different in equality and equity, right? So equality would be everybody that wanders through the door gets charged a hundred dollars for an electric to pull out electrical permit or whatever, right? Equity would be, there would have be an outreach component, right? Where you, you know, you can meet them where they are to be able to help them fill out the paperwork and be able to, you know, access resources to come up with that hundred dollars to pull their permit and that kind of thing, right? I mean, that's within the scope of what the city and the planning department can do. So that's, that's why the definitions, there is like the city of Bellevue, one statement talks about equality, one statement talks about equity, but we're trying to get to an equity statement, right?
I have, I should, I'll put it in the next packet. There's a lot of diagrams and some of the other cities have been doing this a lot longer, even before we were required to, which is part of what they've been doing because communities are changing. They're becoming more diverse. And so I will, I will get you resources and, and Jay is absolutely correct. This isn't, everybody gets the same. They're like the city of Shoreline. I really want to get a hand, a hold. They have a matrices when they're considering public works projects. And some of the things that they're looking at are the age of the infrastructure, the composition of the community that's being served. Is it, you know, is this an area that really does need additional help? So they're equal to other parts of the community that might be better off.
Right, right. And that's the thing is I totally understand the virtue and the intent of all of these things. They all just concern me in that. Just like we were talking about the other day, any of these definitions and the innate subjectivity of some of the, the statements. They all present the opportunity of a party being desperately impacted. And I, I'm very familiar. I know a lot about redlining and specifically how it relates related to financial levers, which again is out of the control of the city. So yeah, I just it's, it's tough to wrap your, your mind around, round again, because we're in new territory in terms of the legality and the yeah, the, the duty of, of government in terms of equal equal enforcement of the law.
I'll see what I can find.
Liz?
Um, something else I wanted to bring up because I know just looking back at past stuff we've done, we always look at, you know, how we can put together something that obviously we always tweak stuff as we go along, but something that we can put together that for the most part and cover and last for and in this case through twenty fifty. Um, you know, so obviously trying to envision and foresee what what our community is going to look like in another twenty-five, twenty-seven years, you know, that's challenging to, obviously definitions can be adjusted, but you know, trying to make sure we're encompassing all the changes in our potential community and what our community is going to grow and look like and they verse diversely change too, which will be great. But making sure we have this definition as inclusive as, as possible to make sure we're including and foreseeing as much as we can, you know. I know that's always difficult, but hopefully with the diagram that was mentioned that can help guide us to make sure we're getting all of the communities and all of our bases covered as best we can. I think is something to keep in mind as well. It's, it's always difficult when we're looking so far down the road, but we want to make sure we're covering everybody that we're talking about. So that's just something I wanted to make sure we're all remembering because what we look like now as a community isn't what we're going to look like in, in our community makeup. So we, but we want to make sure we're covering all of our future community members as well. So thank you.
So Kate, we're also, these cities are wrestling with trying to right past wrongs as well, right? Like if we're talking about the shoreline Richmond Beach area, you know, Sarden, Bill Boeing specifically in the documents excluded all races except for one.
Yeah, and that's in House Bill twelve twenty. And I thought I'd provided that to you all, but I'll make sure you get a copy. It is very specific of what we're being tasked to do. It is not everybody needs to be on the same playing field, which means some people are going to need more than other parts of our community.
Randy?
Mine's more of like a follow-up question kind of for Jake. So are you saying that you want to be sure that we're writing this with at least one general statement that so anyone who feels that they are part of a group that's previously been marginalized can, can reference the equity statement and say, you know, come forward and say, I, I don't feel like I've been hurt, or I don't feel like I'm being treated equal or have the same equality, ability to have the same as other people opportunities. So that's one of your concerns, right? You just want to be sure when we write this that we don't make it so call out every single thing and then actually leave somebody out.
Yeah, and you, you hit a lot of it perfectly. The other
thing that concerns me is just the the points and the sentences about proactive actions. So I, I highlighted a few correcting historic and systematic inequity is in six and seven may require providing more or different levels of support. Number nine, distribute and prioritize resources to those who have been historically and currently marginalized. Number ten, instead of providing everyone the same amount of support. And so I just, I think about all these things. And again, it's the innate subjectivity of it that there's, there's just so many holes in it, especially legally that it, it concerns me because these these things, none of them are going to have an expiration date. So let's say five hundred years of this law being in place happens. And now the dynamics of marginalized communities is different. The, the fact that these things may not hold up with time, or I'll, I'll give you a, that example's poor. Let me give you a different example. An eight-year-old woman living in Monroe on Medicare taxes go up and she can't afford to live where she lives anymore. But housing programs in Monroe who are meant to what's some of the words, providing more or correcting historic and systematic inequities give another party a better chance at not losing their house in that situation. All of them just make me question would this hold up in court? Could that grandma in that situation take it to court and say, why wasn't I given the same treatment under the law? And that's, that's my fear is once we take up the position of being the the arbiter of who does and doesn't deserve more of our resources, you get a little bit more. That's where it opens us up for a ton of liability. Both legally and morally, in my opinion. And so I'm only, I'm only saying this, I understand the position that we're in today and what we're tasked with. I'm just throwing this out here because I love hearing your guys' feedback in this discussion. And I understand, is it twelve twenty?
Twelve twenty, yeah.
And I understand the specificity of it. It's just and, and another reason that I'm saying all this is because I still love the Tacoma definition because it is narrow enough that it could hold up in court. And it's not all about holding up in court. I want to specify or, or highlight that. I'm just saying that is a good test of, is it equal to all people? Is the government giving equal treatment under the law?
So just to clarify, I think, um, I think from what I'm hearing from you is similar to what the stuff that everybody seemed like they liked. Nobody happened to mention the, the really prescribed stuff about saying the city will proactively take steps, right? So maybe the new draft that you give us will hit what he likes to out of those because it sounds like you're saying what some of your concerns, I think might not show up in the, the draft that you might be creating for us.
And can we also think of this more in terms of access rather than outright tax dollars or resources? Because when you talk about representation, engagement and outreach, that is basically access, allowing equitable access to, you know, the planning process, right?
That is.
But that's not what we're talking about with this definition. I mean, that is in some of the definitions, but that's not the intent of twelve twenty. It's not about equal access. Right?
Well, twelve twenty is directing us to fix the wrongs of the past. So if we do our job correctly, those who have been marginalized and not had the same opportunity came up to the, where people who are, have better access.
Right.
And we all continue to
I love it.
To go together.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a couple of different components here. So the Pegetown Regional Council was more interested in the public participation process, housing and equity. That's really their interest. The state said very specifically on the housing side, we must do better.
Right.
We can't just say we're going to. And that's why we're having this conversation tonight.
Totally.
The other one though, is we haven't gotten into this one yet, but this, this year, twenty-two or twenty-three with one of the more recent state amendments to GMA has to do with climate change and it's got more equity in it as well. So the definition is, is, is important and we need to be having this conversation, but I would agree with what Jay was explaining. Equality and equity are different. Equality means everybody is being raised to the same opportunity. I don't know if you've seen that cartoon, but there's there's a little child who is like looking through a little hole. There's a teenager who's like barely looking over and there's an adult who's looking over the fence. And so the equity is they all get the same size box to stand on, but that doesn't mean that they're all seen. And then the equity component is they are given different sized boxes so they can all see over the fence. And that's what this definition is trying to get at.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I, I love the intent completely. It's just
The legal component. I'm more than happy to, to ask our city attorney and, and do some research on that, but I believe our directive is clear on what we're supposed to be doing. So trying to
I, I have a question and no worries if you don't have the answer to this. And this is just theoretical. It, it, the chance of it happening is point probably zero, 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 one. But when a municipality gets taken on a legal ride that goes to a district court or a circuit court or the Supreme Court, if they lose, what is, do you have any idea what the, the payment process is like for that?
Well, that I cannot answer, but I can tell you all this has to go. We would be challenged at the growth management hearings board and the city of Monroe has already been through that with East Monroe.
Right.
And the city did not win their position and we had to revert all of the designations back. So I'd assume it's the same cross process. Now from the court the court component, I would definitely want to be reaching out to our city attorney for his, his input because I am not attorney and I do not pretend to play one. Just tell you what the city experienced.
I have one last question. So the equity statement definition, I mean, is going to kind of be a guiding principle that we will always go back to when we are looking at decisions or housing or something, we will say does this provide equity, the decision that we're about to make or the recommendation? Uh, so I guess I just wanted to restate that, that that's kind of what the goal for us to use this for in the future would be.
Right, it it, this is policy.
May I add one more thing? Jay, earlier when you talked about access, and I just wanted to make sure I'm I'm clear for the record. I I agree with equal access one hundred percent. I thought in what you were saying, you specified that you were talking about access to representation in boards like this. Or were you talking about general access?
Helping the underserved have the ability to stand in front of us.
Okay.
And um, just like any member of the public, some people feel more comfortable standing in front of us and speaking on their topic that concerns them. Um, I think this statement would just make it more focused and make everybody's attention on people that are underserved and doing the outreach to get them to come to planning commission and say, hey, you know, I would appreciate if this, because business owners, obviously, we have business owners come, talk to us about certain aspects of of zoning, but a lot of the community um is just not comfortable coming into settings like this, or, you know, talking about permits or 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 talking about why they got code enforcement or that kind of thing, you know what I mean? Just, there has to be a stronger outreach to the underserved to allow them to feel like like they are not underserved, right? Like they are part of the process.
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah.
And I hope I didn't touch on any of that. I didn't think I did.
No, I wasn't speaking.
Okay, gotcha. I'm sorry. I thought you were saying that to me. I'm like, did I accidentally say?
No, no, no.
Say the wrong words? Okay, gotcha.
It's just that we have to weed through a bunch of definitions to and, you know, what I asked of Kate is I wanted to make sure we're also is the, you know, when we, you know, hear from the mayor, he says, the first thing you should look at is Imagine Monroe. And everything flows from that. Well, this should also kind of flow from and have the same spirit as as Imagine Monroe, because, you know, there was enough representation developing that statement, right, to get a well-rounded feel for the city and the the folks that make up the city. Um, so I just want to make sure we're focusing on the right things and not um, because I think last meeting I said it can be five sentences or five lines or whatever. But that's not really what, we're not concerned about exact text and size of the paragraph. We're trying to get the spirit, and I'm talking about
Yeah.
Twenty twenty years, not five hundred. I'm trying to get us that, you know, kind of the spirit
Yeah.
that guides us for the next twenty years, because obviously it's gonna be your your boy that's talking about joint and planning commission, then he'll have his own ideas of it.
Yeah.
Um, as we evolve and, you know, understand things a little bit more. Um so I expect in twenty years that the definition will change, and I
Yeah.
Does for the better, right?
Yeah.
We're trying to get something here that satisfies, um, you know, basically our mandate uh with the people, you know, that we have on on the commission here and you know, to make sure that we're doing our best for the entire community, like the entire community.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I would just say, you know, that that's part of what we've been doing with this process. We've been doing all, we call it the pop ups uh at Pride and Juneteenth and Block Party. We are going, we're trying to be much more proactive um, and still have not gotten our Spanish speaking right, community members. We still have not found a platform to get to them. So I'm
Thanks, Melanie.
The um, the name of the event is escaping me, but I'll get the information to you. There is an event that will probably have a lot of our um Hispanic Yeah, is that, yeah.
Is it the one at the fairgrounds?
Yep.
Awesome.
Oh, at the fairgrounds. Yeah, yeah. I'll make sure I get the the flyer to you. It's escaping me what it's called, but I believe it's on August sixth. I think Jake's right with that. Thank you.
Yeah.
You guys, you're always coming up with, hey, did you do that? Okay, that's fantastic. So um we are trying to go to the people who are not coming to us. This is
Yeah.
And and I don't know if you were part of the process in twenty, for the twenty fifteen, they had the um shop in downtown Monroe for multiple days, so you could pop in, and that was kind of the same thing. We're trying to go, come to the community where people aren't comfortable coming to meetings.
Yeah, no, 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 I totally understand that. It's just about the the get at unequal distribution of resources, that's Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Well, I will do my best to come back again, and I might try two or three attempts and see if we're getting it close. I do remember the one thing that Janelle was um really concerned about was representation. So that's um, I know that was one of her concerns to have that particular word included in the definition that you have representation. So. Okay.
So do we have a few keywords we'd like her to kind of
I think.
Think about? We have representation, we have, definitely have to have equity, right?
Well, I think I heard um for number two, and this, like I said, I will try to do a multiple, multiple definitions, but um, Brandy liked the proactively adopt policies and take genuine action. In uh, number three, we're kind of moving away from that because it was modified in the one I brought to you. Is that, did I hear that correctly? You want that last sentence uh that I put together? That said, the communities of color historically ma- marginalized communities and those affected by poverty are represented and are poverty are represented and engaged in the planning, policymaking and decision making process.
Well, on that one even, it doesn't have um, like, abilities or gender. I mean, that that one really highlights like three main things, like race, your income level, and then marginalized communities. I guess you could um, you know, that that might go to that idea. Maybe that is that general term that we want, but um
That's why you like number ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I liked about ten, that it really calls out like, you know, five or six education income, background, culture. It doesn't actually say like ethnicity or race, but um, so I guess that one's missing on there. Um.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Kate, go ahead.
Um, I just want to make sure. Um, okay, yeah, all of ten, you liked the first sentence of ten. And then on four, it was the city provides all community members with equal and effective city services, resources, opportunities and influence so that all people achieve their full potential. That, Greg, you liked that as well.
What number was that from?
It's number four, the city of Redmond.
Uh, the first sentence?
Yeah.
I think full potential is um, like an interesting way to put that, like, I think it should be more like essential needs instead of um, because what does that mean? Like, everyone's gonna have a different potential, and the city can't provide that, so it can just provide like the resources, or I don't know, maybe we are trying to get there too, but
Does it, does, it is vague, potential, when we're talking about
It's just like specific, every single person's potential is gonna be different.
Essential needs, I like.
And then the differences in life outcomes cannot be predicted by race, class or other identity. I think that's a cool sentiment, but I don't know if it like really says anything in it, if we have these other ones that are coming in. And it's also kind of negative, like, oh.
Yeah, I think I, I think I heard we're moving away from the the Puget Sound Regional Council's. Yeah.
Jake, yeah, I was gonna say, if if we're kind of like throwing best ideas out there, um I love the first sentence of ten two, um, but I I would add, and this this is kind of a, it's kind of highlights my concern about shorter, maybe better uh disability is left out of that definition.
Ability is
Abilities are.
And if we add, if we add
Okay, I did not see ability, that's fine.
Either the word ethnicity or race, I think it would accommodate Brandy, right?
And then, I I'm sorry, I was just gonna add the the second part, um. I I would say that if we, if we roll with a lot of ten, I would I would appreciate the first sentence, because again, the second is one of the ones that specifically says, instead of providing everyone the same amount of support.
Okay, so that's what
It's funny, it's almost, it's always the second half of all of these definitions that adds the affirmative part or the the uh corrective part about distribution of resources.
I guess I, I feel like I need to clarify a little bit because equity is we we're making sure that everybody's coming up, so it doesn't mean you get the same. There are some groups of people that we may actually have to help more through policy or choice of capital projects. So that's, that's that, the second part that you have harbored over unfortunately is what that's our task to some extent. Because if everybody got the same amount, we're just gonna continue any kind of um inequity we have in our community. If everybody gets, yeah, it just keeps on perpetuating. There are some groups in our community that are behind. And so that's what these sentences are trying to achieve, where
Right.
Everybody, and now we get to move up together.
Right. Yeah, again, I guess, I guess my fear is always the party that did not receive that same corrective amount of resources. So again, if it's a uh waiver program for city fees. And again, there's, there's a business that's not included in the definition, who desperately or or they can't handle that fee, it's gonna be the thing that keeps them out of that event, the idea that they can't make it because of that, but another party can. When you consider the role, I I guess it's just a, yeah, it's a high level issue. Just uh about the idea of kind of government ensuring equal access. And again, by access, I don't always mean
Yeah.
direct representation in city hall or 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 physical presentation to city hall.
Melanie, can you jump in?
Um, with that last sentence I was talking about with um, number four and what you have as the proposed, um you said, did you say marginalized communities that's specifically defined in the, in the bill? Did you say that?
Um, Puget Sound Regional Council talks about marginalized communities, the House Bill twelve twenty, um. It talks about we need to basically um reverse what has been happening.
Okay.
I can't remember if the term marginalized is specifically used in that, but I will definitely have that for you.
Wondering if if in the defi- because these, right now, we're looking at definitions.
Yeah.
And obviously, this is gonna be referred to anytime we reference equity in policy moving forward.
Yeah.
But if we add the marginalized communities into that anywhere, whether it's that last sentence or somewhere else, would it be possible for us to then define marginalized communities? Because maybe that's a chance to really highly expand on what we mean as a city. Um, so we can get more specific and it can be long if necessary. Um, whereas the the city's equity statement could stay a little bit more. Just one, one suggestion, but I'm s- I'm still leaning towards at least most of, most of ten. As long as we add the ethnicity or race in there as one other, I think that first sentence does a pretty good job. And then I was gonna, you, you put it nicely, that that, the second part of that second sentence is equity. That's what
Yeah.
That's what it is. So I, I, I think it needs to stay, and I I understand the the question Jake, but then I guess I I challenge on on what's, what's the alternative solution? Because the city is being tasked with with doing this, and if if the fear is, how is the city held liable, then what, what's the, what's the alternative solution then to
Right.
Still make sure that we're doing this job as necessary.
Yeah, exactly. And that's the question I can't answer, and that's why I guess it's like Yeah, fight and uh, fight and win. Um, yeah, I'll save that question later.
Okay. Well, I think I I'm gonna bring back more resources and in addition to multiple definitions for your consideration.
And our homework should be HB twelve twenty.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I can, but I'll I'll send it to you. You don't have to go looking for it. The other one, though, is I do want to pull the one from, I'm pretty sure it passed this year. It had to do specifically with climate change, but there were some um, there there are some policy pieces in there that get to equity as well. So these new, this is, like I said, this is new territory. So um, it's challenging, it's kind of uncomfortable a little bit. I mean, I've never, this is new to me. We're learning together.
Well, I was just gonna say, it seems like what um Kelsey was talking about, there is wording in in five for the city of Tacoma that um we could maybe use where it says opportunities necessary to satisfy their essential needs. So again, there's like, almost like keywords out of all of these.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is glad that there are lots of choices for us to work It's starting from scratch.
Yeah, I, seven's definition of equity, I think, is awesome.
Okay, well, I will be back. And we'll get to do this all over again.
Okay. Did you get enough feedback from all of the commissioners?
I think so. I think so. I I think I have direction. Um So now we get to go to the next fun part, and that was talking about questions. Uh, where, what are the questions that we need to be asking ourselves to ensure equity? As we are looking at policies and um where we started at our last meeting are the questions that Meg had put together, our consultant team. Um, and those are, I'm just gonna read them to you. Does the analysis undertake in, taken in this chapter represent all subgroups of the population and provide contextual information on how or if outcomes are shared by all residents, businesses and areas? That's the question number one. Question number two, how might inequity or exclusion show up for whom? Subquestion, does the goal policy or could this goal policy have the potential to unintentionally intentionally or unintentionally disproportionately impact a community or group of people? Number three, could there be unseen impacts to access health and safety? Number four, are there words or images that may be offensive and or exclusionary? And number five, are these assumptions about a person's upbringing, economic status or education for them to be, to be partake? Our take, okay, seen and heard in this chapter goal or policies and um there was a lot of concern about these questions, and so I was able to find, again, thank goodness, we're not the first ones going through this. Uh, options from the city of Kirkland. Um, they've gone, they, so they have their equity document already in process, part of draft of their draft, comp plan update. The next was the city of Redmond, um Seattle, and then the government's alliance on race and equity, and I'm not sure what ins- governmental institution that is, but it was interesting, their words, and then, oops, my pages all messed up. And then Sorry. No, here we go. Um, and then British Columbia again, um, had four questions. So do you want me to read them to you? Do you want to just take time to look at them? How would you like to proceed?
I'm, I'm sorry, are you talking about the other cities, correct, or question?
Yeah, so as an alternative to what we, what was prepared for us by Mig, Kirkland, Redmond, Seattle, the government alliance, and then British Columbia provided a different collection of questions. And so that was um are, do do these questions resonate better? Do you think they're helping us look and review our policies?
Right.
Better.
And then this is gonna be our, the the theory is that this is gonna be the litmus test for our definition of equity and how we're
No, and so this will be the lens that we are looking through to make sure we're um, we are using Imagine Monroe.
Right.
And equity, as we're looking at all of our goals and policies, and we're looking at our future capital facility plans. How how are we ensuring this in our community? What collection of questions do we need to be asking ourselves?
Yeah, okay.
Trying to keep ourselves out of trouble. If we get the right questions, the right number of questions, we keep our, we make decisions that keep us out of trouble, right?
Well, i- it's trying to, it's trying to um it's trying to ensure that Imagine Monroe is in everything, that that, you know, that is our top filter. That's what the the mayor is It's trying to ensure that Imagine Monroe is in everything that, that you know, that is our top filter, that's what the, the mayor is asked. So what questions do you ask? To get there and equity is now part of that question or the question we need to be asking because of state and Puget Sound Regional Council.
So an example would be that they were proposing to change zoning in a specific area. And right now you get nobody that came and commented and then we get to make some choices and. This is that extra, these extra questions that we say. How could this, um, how could this turn out? What's our goal here and? Who could it accidentally impact and? It's, it's a screening process for when we're making decisions on things. I personally, I like the mid ones pretty well. Number six, I think they are misworded something for one thing and then, um. I don't, I don't really like that one so much, it's, um. And maybe instead of other assumptions about a person's upbringing, like maybe just say. But someone's, um, you know. What is, how, how does it say? The mayor says that a lot, um. Lived experience, could someone's lived experience, um, you know, have an impact on? Anyways, I, yeah, that one was a little weird, but the other thing, the other one that I really liked the best was that government alliance and race and equity. About their questions were, um. Clear and simple, but they got to a lot more things than even Kirkland's is really blirty. But it doesn't really hit those main things like. Staying focused on what's your goal and what are the impacts and making sure you're thinking. Of all the different, the benefits and the possible, um, consequences of any decision. Those, those were my two that I liked the best.
It's Jakes. Is your mic on for Melanie?
Um, I also like the government alliance on race and equity. I think it pretty much. Covers the bulk of what we're. Or all of what we need to consider, make sure we're asking those questions with every. Every shift in policy and. About the whole comp plan and, and all of the above, so. That's my, that's my favorite.
Good input.
I can also come back for this one if you'd like Janelle's input as well and give you more time to think about the questions.
Liz has her hand up.
Um, I would like to dollars input as well, but I also like the, um. Government alliance on race and equity. I like that it's. Pretty simple and straightforward, um. The ones that are definitely more wordy, uh, like Kirkland. It's. A bit overwhelming and. Personally, I like simple and straightforward and. I do feel like. The government alliance, it's very simple and straightforward and. Doesn't. Necessarily leave a lot for interpretation and I feel like it takes. You know, have we talked to the community? Have we engaged with the community? Did we look at data? Um. You know, proposals. Um. Has burdens been taken into account, planning, you know, I, it looks at more aspects of things, so. Um. I feel like that one ticks off more of the boxes than. A lot of the others personally. So, and maybe we can. Tweak and pull out parts from other. Other parts that we all like, like we did with. You know, what we just went through, but. I feel like on these. More detailed parts, I think it's important to get all of the commissioners. Feedbacks, so that's just. My thought, cause these are. Really big, important items that we're talking about right now. And since they impact everything we're doing and looking at in our main guidelines. I feel like it's important to get everybody's. Feedback on, so, thank you.
Melanie?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I do think it's really important that we get Janelle's feedback because between her lived experiences and also, I don't know if you all know, but she's going to school for. This right now, so she's literally deep into getting, I believe her masters in DEI work essentially, so this is. This is an area that I, I don't feel comfortable moving forward on any of it without at least getting her input, cause it's. It's awesome that she's got that expertise and is on planning commission to provide the input, so. Yeah.
The other thoughts? Okay, the final piece of your new information tonight is the racial equity analysis report, um. Leanne was kind enough to print out a copy for you and this is just an introduction. Um, I've been going through it and there's, I have several things that I'd like our consultants to work on. Um, like on page four, I think it's important for the community to understand how we've changed going from two thousand ten to two, uh. Twenty, twenty ten or two thousand, two thousand ten, two thousand twenty. And looking the census data because part of what, this is specific to the housing element, so this is the stuff that we have to do to be compliant with the new state law. And so it's not only just what is today, but it, the historical view to see how the community is changing. Um, some of the other simple things that I would really like them to change is all of the tables have the same information. So the, the city of Monroe's, Snohomish County and Washington State, so you see the three different geographies. Um, the information. Um, other than that, I didn't see anything that surprised me, um. And I, uh, oh, the other thing. Y'all probably need the census maps. There, there's like, for example, on page ten, table number seven is giving you census map. Well, the map should be included. Um, a couple of other things that I'm noting is we just. It needs to be less words and more graphics. Um, anybody who picks this up should be able to understand the information, so I'll be asking our consultants to. See if they can use the infographics a little bit more than just the words. Um. And then, let's see here, the last piece is, so. Read at your leisure, send me questions. If, um, I will also be bringing this back, we can discuss it at the next meeting. The next piece though of importance is after you've read all the information at the back of the document, beginning on page, um, sixty-three. They started evaluating. How our policies are helping us, not helping us, and this is getting at. The definition and the lenses we've just talked, so it's building blocks. Run through these, see if you agree, don't agree, or if you have questions, well, how come this, like I was explaining, um, at our last meeting. The consultants had flagged, um. Infrastructure improvements could be of concern, which seems. It doesn't make a lot of sense to somebody like me because we need to, uh, provide you with good water, sewer. Transportation, but the thought was in certain areas, if you're doing those upgrades, it could make that property more valuable, which could then push out. People. And so it's not that we don't do it, we just need to acknowledge it, or are there ways to counterbalance? Potential increases in property value, cause we have to do infrastructure, that's, that's what cities do. So that's. That's what they're trying to do specifically for housing policies in this. So.
Randy?
I have a question, so I understand we aren't gonna be able to get the information on everybody, right? But like on the education. They get up to a number of like thirteen thousand, so that's page, um. Like, hmm, five. Of their report, um, it tells us about thirteen thousand residents, what their education is. But on the housing one, on pages six and seven and eight. It only get, ends up getting totals up to like. I don't know, sixty-seven hundred or something. And I know generally you can extrapolate out numbers, right? You can say, oh, this is a good sampling and it's probably, you know, true up to a hundred percent if you extrapolate out the numbers, but. I, I just don't know that these, uh, so it's basically saying one hundred and fifty. You know, the, the page I'm talking about, about no, not cost burdened, how many people and I just feel like. That cost burdening part is pretty important, especially when we're trying to talk about displacement and foreclosures and, um. It doesn't seem representative, um. Of what I hear when I talk to people and so I'm thinking maybe the numbers aren't.
Keep in mind, they're, they're, these are not individuals, it's households.
So if you're saying, okay, sixty-seven hundred households times.
Two point three.
Three people, okay.
Cause our population is almost twenty.
We're over twenty.
We're over twenty in the city due to annexations and.
Yeah.
We're.
Okay, that answers my question. Forty thousand five hundred something.
Yeah.
As of July first this year.
Thanks, Kate.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah, and another thing that, um, we haven't discussed here, I might have brought it up before, but, um. When I had gone through this in two thousand and five, there was concern about distinguishing between the Department of Corrections population and the rest of the community because. That ranges, has ranged between two thousand and five thousand at its max. And so that population is a little bit different than the rest of the community and when you're trying to figure out housing needs and, um, jobs. We do need to talk, we have to acknowledge that this population is a little bit different than the rest of the community, so that's. That's one thing I do wanna ask the consultants. I don't know if there's a way to distinguish between the two because when the information comes, it's coming from the census, which typically gets down to your census block. I do know a million years ago when I was in college, I had to do, fill out the, um, census form. In Bellingham because that's where I lived, but that's not where I, that's where I was residing at the time, so I don't know if that's how they treat. The Department of Corrections or if there's another way of segregating the information, but I'm gonna ask the question. It's important. So we don't, we don't need to talk more about this unless you have specific questions. Again, it's a lot of information, so as you're reading it and going through it. Feel free to send me an email, do not apply all, send it to me and I will bring all the information back to you at the next meeting. Deep, heavy information.
It's gotta be one of the most. One of the most complicated, comprehensive plans?
It is.
In Washington history.
It, it is in the sense that, um. We're tackling topics that. Have always been to some extent or another, um, a reality in our communities, but now we're being told you can't just plan for it, you actually have to accommodate. And you need to be much more thoughtful about. Ensuring that all members of your community are participating, so.
Right.
It's, um. It's new, it's important. I mean, Monroe is made up of many different people.
Yeah.
So. It's definitely, it's an education for me as well, yeah. Okay. Alright, so the last thing I have, we'll get to. That's all I have for new, our old business, I guess.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kate. And we will move on, uh. Six is our new business. And we have actually two months worth of.
You do.
Community development newsletters.
You can bring them up, okay. Okay, so for, do you wanna run this? Sweet, yeah. Me break.
Okay, so we're gonna start with monthly port for May, I'm not sure how you guys have been doing it, so I'll kinda highlight the front page. Um, has a lot of the quick facts and there's some of the projects they've had changes over the past two months. Um, in May. Um, we actually had a busy pre-apps, we had five pre-application meetings, um. We had one for the church building off of Lewis Street that's for sale, a change of use. Um, in Indian grocery store and to-go restaurants, um, a church looking at a different space. Um, a short flat with seven new homes, that was actually their second meeting for that proposal, um, and then in addition on the hospital. Um, you can see we had a busy month for single family permits in May, um. And then busy month for inspections. Our, one of our highlights are the building department performed over a hundred and sixty inspections on eighty-two new white, we finding signs throughout the city, so that was a lot of coordination on Victoria's part, our building inspector to get out there and see all those new signs. Should've got to each one twice, so. So big task, um. Code enforcement, eight cases open, twenty-eight closed, business licenses, hundred and seventy-eight total. Um, our project highlight for the month was the Boys and Girls Club edition. Uh, this was an addition that wrapped up in May on the Boys and Girls Club for the new E cap preschool program, I believe. They started back with the site plan review approval back in twenty twenty and then, um, sat on it, the permits for a little bit. Uh, at least due to some funding issues and then circled back and were able to complete the project and get it all closed out, so. Any questions on any of those or? Um, land use projects. Um, I'll go through these a little more in June, I think, unless something jumps out at me here as we actually finished. The city hall renovation, I think actually. Site plan review, I think that technically wrapped up in June. Heather's Hope is since wrapped up, the temporary. Temporary housing, yes. Keep scrolling here, if you guys have a question about any of this, let me know. Um, the P U D substation is gotta be pretty close if they're not quite done yet. Um, with their construction, it went live back in June, I believe. So that's great, a lot more service for the area. Chart for single family permits, as you can see, we've already outpaced twenty twenty-two. It's only, this is May. Uh, big one is the building codes. Um, the state was set to adopt the new building codes, uh, July first, I believe, and that has gotten pushed back to October now. Um, there was a lot of big changes, so we had a big wave of building permits come in, it came in and now we can kinda. Settle into those and then we'll probably get another one in October now. Unless the state pushes that deadline back again, which our building official thinks might be the case, see? Oh, sorry.
Did I see two new pickleball courts at Sky River Park?
Did, yep, um, we have a shoreline. Permit for that, um, kind of near on the playground side of the park, there is gonna be two new pickleball courts that just went to public hearing.
Last week.
Last week.
Cool.
Well, yep.
I'm always for more amenities in our parks, that's awesome.
Yep, yep, been sponsoring over in, uh, has been working hard on that one.
Code enforcement, looks like they're really doing a fantastic job, Leanne.
Yes, yeah, um, Kevin's definitely taking the lead on that, especially right now because over in the police department, um. Gabby has stepped aside from her role, we've had her here for many, many years, she's gonna be trying to come back as an officer, I believe, but she's taking some time in between. So Kevin in particular and the whole building department has really stepped up and taken on a lot of the cases that the police would normally handle. Um, while they're in their transition period, hiring someone new, um, and getting them up to speed, so they've been working really hard. Business licenses. Um, looking too exciting. Comp plan, you guys are right in the thick of that, so. Um, middle housing grants, I'll talk about that a little bit more in June, cause I need to have good update and again, you guys are probably more in the loop on that than I am, annexations. Don't know if there's been any real changes, but.
And Anita will let us know the amount of the grant, none of the.
Yes, it might win the next one.
Uh, yeah, we, we did, um, receive full reimbursement for the grants.
Okay.
Which closed out at the end of. June. Yeah, end of June.
Okay.
Switch to June here.
It's not listed, but I will get that information for you.
Thanks.
I think it might be in this one, it was the highlight, so that's why.
Oh, it's the highlight.
I don't know, she gave me the amount.
Nice picture, Kate.
Oh, I got pictures, so, um. Okay, on to June, quieter month for pre-apps, um. It was single one for, I don't know if this was a short flat, I mean, it must have been two, five houses and two properties, so. Um, and then the, one of the project highlights is that from Anita, the city successfully completed and submitted all their deliverables for the middle housing grants. Did not give me the amounts unfortunately, but. Kate, sounds like she's on it. Um, our big project highlight is community outreach, Kate touched on this a little bit. In the month of, month of June, our department was really busy, we were out at the farmer's market, uh, Pride, Juneteenth, the block party, um, and then. Visiting classes at Monroe High School as well and running through. And then visiting classes at Monroe High School as well, and running through that same comprehensive plan exercise that we did, the high schoolers got to do that. Quieter month for single-family permits, just four, but we did have some more TIs, commercial permits issued. See. Have some new civil designs that came in in June for permits. The Duval Rio Vista is the. The property next to what was Denny's and will become IHOP, that long blue building, they came in with their civil upgrade permit. To get the site work done.
Stayed commercial?
Yep, staying commercial, they're just gonna be, it's gonna be a drive-through coffee, so they're taking down part of the building. And redoing the other part of it. We approved one of our ADUs last month. Still two impending status, waiting on the applicants to get us more information. Yeah, moving forward on all of our flats, up on the hill still, Foxborough, just down the street from us, should be completed, they're hoping here in August. So that's been a big project, those are the townhomes on the north side of Main Street, down on that direction.
Yeah, I, I believe we were told that. All of the units have sold. Which they, they changed directions, cause it was a little bit of a lull. And they were going to lease the properties, and the market didn't change, so they wound up selling. So keep that in mind, the question.
Yeah, the, the five houses that are gonna be on the two lots, is that, are those gonna be private residential, are those affordable housing units, rent, like?
You know, I didn't do that pre-app, that one was Amy's, but it's a single owner, and there's currently one house, but they have two properties. And I believe their materials were not super clear about what direction they wanted to go, so I think it was a little bit more.
I think, I know, I'm familiar with the family, so that's why I was asking, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the, the narrative is that these houses are, or whatever they wind up doing. Is trying to find housing for their family.
Okay, so that's why, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I, my understanding is this is not something that they would be selling, it's they actually.
It's kinda private residential for the family, okay.
So they, they're talking about boundary line adjustment, they're talking, splitting it into five lots, they're talking about.
A lot of things.
Yes, fact finding, I'm not sure they knew.
That's right, dwelling units, they're not quite sure which route to go.
Sure. But the zoning is one per acre?
That is residential four, I believe.
That's a pretty good size.
Yeah, but there's some complications, if they do the plat, if I remember correctly, the road has to be improved, which has a significant cost. So they're, they're looking at all of their options, okay.
Guess that was most of the big ones, we went through most of them.
The other one I need to let you all know, is we successfully got another grant for the periodic GMA comp plan update. The first half was due, wrote the grant, got council approval, the mayor's signature, and reimbursed all within two weeks. So the first half was sixty-five thousand, and the way the, the state set up. And this is the Washington Department of Commerce as well, is another sixty-five thousand for the next two budget cycles, so that, every bit helps.
Yep.
I think that was, that was the highlights, and we have any other questions?
Thanks, Leanne. Question? Thank you very much. Ready to move on to discussion? Start with Liz.
The only thing I have is, this last week, I, for whatever reason, was driving around Kirkland. Seattle, Bothell, Edmonds, all over the place, kids up. And I was taking advantage of looking at all the variety of housing everybody has that wasn't Redmond looking. And if anybody has an opportunity to look at what Bothell Commons that's being built. On the old Seattle Times site, it's, I believe, three-story. Kind of the look, or something we had talked about doing on the Monroe land, that's for sale around Lowe's. With the commercial on the bottom, with apartments on top, with the option of it being taller on the bottom, that could be apartments. But commercial, if need be, really attractive looking, but it's only three stories, so I thought it was only three-story. So it looks really, really nice, and I saw a lot of similar build-outs like that around Edmonds. Might have also been Kenmore, too, anyways, I did, I've done a lot of driving this last week, so. But I saw a lot of that three-story heights that looks really, really nice, and when I was seeing a lot of the five-story heights. Next to like two-story buildings, it looks a little wonky, so that was a little interesting, actually seeing. These brand-new buildings next to these really low buildings, so it was just interesting. I know Deborah Knight had suggested, and I've heard community feedback. And possibly, you know, maybe a five-story building wouldn't look so bad for apartments. I don't know, I, I've heard a lot of mixed reviews from community members I've talked to, I've heard some that like it, some that are against it, so. Anyways, I've just been doing a lot of observing, but. That's what I've seen, but if you get a chance to look at Bothell Commons, it was, it was pretty nice looking, so anyways, that's what I got.
Thanks, Liz, Melanie?
Um, I have been attending the Music in the Parks, which have been fantastic, all the Fridays have been beautiful, and we've got one more this Friday. Every, all the food and stuff opens at six, and then music's at seven. This is often the favorite, which is Here Nation, which is an eighties cover band, essentially, so looking forward to that as well. The farmer's markets have had great attendance every week, it's also been beautiful weather, so, you know, if, if people haven't had a chance to go out to either of those. I highly recommend both, and then about, I think it was a week and a half ago, I had a chance to. Attend the, it was the first, at least since I've been here, community forum about SRO, the school district. So it kinda crosses over between city and school, and I thought that just starting that discussion and that collaboration between city and school was really. Awesome and beneficial for anybody who was in attendance. I don't think it was recorded for people to look back on, but I just, I'm hopeful that more of that will happen between the city and school and, and other stakeholders in the community. And then, as a follow-up, because I had had some questions, I actually ended up meeting. At the police department and got some questions answered, and was also able to provide some feedback on. Just hopefully getting some additional information out to the community, so they can kinda get it, a feel for at least the relation, relationship aspect. Of the SRO's duties and, and benefits in the school, so it was just nice to have that conversation, and I also got to tour the, the police department in the process. And my understanding is they had been hard at work conducting some interviews that morning, and so they're, they're looking to, to fill some of the openings. That are there at the police department right now, which is good, this, never really wants your police department to be, to be lost after anything like that. So I'm glad that they're filling those positions, and I was just thankful for the opportunity to be able to do that, and I appreciate those conversations. And our police department's willingness to, to have those conversations, and then also just the school districts. Looking at having more of those conversations, so good all around, yeah, that's it for me today.
I thought the discussion was really great today, thanks Kate for everything, and it's exciting that we're raising the standard of our city to include everyone. And this weekend I went to a festival incarnation, saw a lot of people from Monroe there, and it was really, it was wonderful, a lot of local bands. And it was just, felt really good to be surrounded by community and love and joy with that. And then to Liz's point on, I was actually thinking about those buildings today as well, like what's gonna go there. I saw a spray-on moss for concrete, that if we did, I know this is weird, but like, if the buildings were concrete. And they had like moss on the outside, it helps with air conditioning and insulation, it's also really pretty. And I don't know, just been thinking a lot about building standards and trees and how to keep, like, cause it's getting hotter. And how, like, I just got a new AC unit, and how to like fight us using more energy when we do get to those buildings. Or even these new developments, cause I'm seeing a lot of the new developments around not having a single tree. In like any of the development, and how important that is. I'm just, at that festival, going from the sun to the shade, it was like fifteen degrees difference, and how that just helped everything, so. I think that's everything.
Thank you. Randy?
Just to, for the acronym that Commissioner Lockhart was using, the SRO was the School Resource Officer. That, that collaboration between the police department and the school, I was at that meeting as well. And that, that subject is important to a lot of people in the community. So also, the, I like what you just said, Kelsey, about the trees, I've been saying how thankful I am for trees lately. Because of how hot it's been, and that is something that we're gonna start looking at with the comp plan, because climate change being something that we are gonna need to focus on. And if we don't get into that until the winter, let's say, so let's all remind each other about that, cause those are some of the things that we can implement. Is requiring trees to either remain on lots or be planted on developments. The, it's been a while since we've all met, and I'm trying to remember all the different things that have gone on, but the block party. I did go to that, and it was really interesting to me how it was really well-attended by just all different ages. And new people and, and old people, and it was just, it was very cool. And I know a lot of people think that it's actually the city that puts that on, yeah, even though it's the chamber. And so I know, even though it is the chamber, it's probably in the city's benefit to continue to make sure they go. Cause I know you guys were really well-represented there, and really making an effort to go out and talk to people, which was cool, Lance was going out and engaging people. To try to get feedback and stuff, so just a message to you guys that it doesn't matter how well that goes. Because people do think that it is a city event, and I do know the city staff were helping a lot, putting out, you know, the road signs and all that stuff. There were some complaints that it was on Friday, and it was like Friday in Monroe during the summer, lots of traffic, and it really caused. Problems outside of the fun part where I was at, I guess. Another thing for feedback I've been hearing a lot lately is, while we don't have complete control over this. Housing being part of what we're gonna be looking at, a lot of people are getting squeezed out of either where they currently live. Because their houses are being sold, so renters being displaced, and then there's really nowhere else for them to go. Monroe does not currently have like small-sized apartments that are vacant and open for people, or small-sized houses that are more affordable for people. So a lot of community members I'm running into are talking to me about housing and how expensive it is. And that there's just nothing that's their size, they're, they're not able to afford a one-point-two-million-dollar house. And where can they go? Alright, that's all I got, so thanks.
Thanks, Brenda, Jake. Probably gonna have a long one as well, just because it has been so long, and I do, I, I was thinking about it, and I think I wanna wrap up some of my comments. From earlier on in the meeting, because it did go on for a long time, and I just wanna make sure I'm succinct. I've been down a rabbit hole of court cases, learning about court cases recently, because I'm a, a government constitution. And court nerd, I would say, and so I just wanted to affirm that I, I appreciate the. Intent and sensitivity and the history of, and the meaning of twelve-twenty. And what we're tasked with in that regard. And I, I said the things I said particularly, because I do feel like we still have a responsibility to always consider. Our, our role in terms of enforcement of the law, and I'll give an example of. The other day, we were talking about fraternal organizations being on Main Street. And the fear that we had was, well, if we make a conditional or one-time acceptance of it, we have to allow others to do it. And so I bring that up because we would all love to govern with our heart one-hundred percent of the time. But we have to be considerate of legality, and, and also never, never relenting. In our, our attempt to discover or, or think about the party that. We may be, wait, we may be hurting somewhere, or we may be taking away equal access from. So anyways, thank you guys for, for listening, I'll add this A tonight. And getting into some, some other topics, it has been a while, so I've got a lot of feedback from people since we last met. And I'll just go in random order, number one, I heard from a business owner who was explaining the traffic. Along northbound, or going north on Lewis Street from Lewis Street Bridge. During rush hour, the traffic, and I've experienced this as well, is horrible, the driving can oftentimes be horrible. The parking lane to the right is frequently used as a sort of relief lane, even though obviously it isn't what it's meant for. And that can present danger to pedestrians and, and people who might be parked in that lane, so that's just something for us to keep in mind. As we look into infrastructure later on, I think two oh three sometimes doesn't get as much attention as it, as it might need. The other feedback I got recently was when we are considering mixed use, to think twice about the. Allowing the buildings to have decks because of the potential for people to. Leave garbage or, or. Have really cluttered decks that might look down, make downtown less attractive. So just, I guess, a design. Question for, for design quality and requirements, something for us to consider. Also loved Liz bringing up the, the commons, I've been driving by that pretty frequently, and it's been interesting. I haven't been by there lately, but the last time I was by, it kinda reminded me of like old Soviet housing projects. And I think it must have just been frame at that point, because you guys are saying they're pretty pretty now, so I need to drive by. And it also made me think it'd be awesome at some point. Some point in this process to review all of the new different mixed-use developments in the area, pictures. Or just task each other to go check it out, and just see the, the different varieties. And then, lastly, the events, yeah, have been amazing, the chamber has just been. They're in their, their stride completely with the events, the farmer's market, the block party, the concerts in the park. Just doing incredible, incredible work, and they deserve so much appreciation. There was one thing that the staff was doing at the block party that I never heard the answer to, I guess it's been a while since we met. And that was, when you think of Monroe, what song do you think of?
I will put the table, we have, actually, we had more answers than I expected, so I will make sure that is.
Chart it out. And then that's all I got. Thanks, Jake. Yep. Alright, speaking of projects improving in looks as they near completion. I think that the warehouse industrial building, where it placed the, the old East Side Masonry building. I think that's gonna alleviate some of the social media posts about, you know. What was going in there, because it does look like an attractive, useful building. They pretty it up, Tom. And I, I was also at the block party, saw some folks there, right, Brandon? So it was well-attended, it was, I never thought that it would mess with people's traffic, and they would not like it. So I understand why it was on a Friday after work and everything, I mean, it, it was a nice event. Yeah, totally. That's all I have. Kate?
I don't have anything else for you tonight, sorry.
Dan, thank you so much for being here, subbing in, yeah, appreciate it. You have anything for us? You gonna run our next meeting?
Hopefully not, I don't like seeing you. Hopefully not, I don't like seeing you guys, but, uh, hopefully you know we'll be back, but I don't have anything to make, thank you.
The only thing is, I take my daughter to college in two weeks.
Oh, shit.
Wazoo.
What? I thought you would only pay for Western.
Well, she wouldn't listen to me. Didn't wanna be a Viking, she wants to be a king.
Good for her, congrats.
Lost rest in the house.
Congrats. Another fine, uh, Monroe High alumni?
A what?
Is she a fine Monroe High alumni? Was she a Monroe grad?
She, no, we, um, she's Cammy.
Oh.
In Muckeltoyo.
Okay.
That's like that. There's a lot going on. Oh, uh, actually, there is one thing. Um, Lance and I met with the school district last week, um, with three parties who have good knowledge with capital facilities. And we're just starting the dialogue with them. Um, it sounds like the school district will be doing a long-range strategic plan for their facilities. Infrastructure properties, uh, and hopefully they'll have some information that we can tie into our comp plan. They're getting started now. I don't know, we've got a consultant on board, but I was very pleased to hear that. So we know what their needs are.
Right, is our next meeting here?
I think so. Um, I will touch base with facilities, so, um. It all is dependent on the temporary court space because that's where we will be meeting on the Village Way, um, building on Village Way. And I'm not sure if they're gonna be ready by our first meeting in August or second meeting in August, but we will, we will let you know. Yeah, and that will be, um. I'm still not a hundred percent on how we're going to facilitate. I think we're gonna be around a table. Uh, we have the two owls. If you've experienced meetings with the, the little things are about here and they follow you and listen to you. I think it's pretty good for, um, parties who, uh, call in or are zooming in. So, um, it's gonna be a learning adventure. I believe we're gonna have some IT assistant, maybe that first meeting. So, more on learning adventures.
Why is it different than the city, I guess, where the, the city council or other?
It conflicts with the school district.
Interesting, oh, okay.
Same nights.
Gonna be a tough two years.
Yeah, and, uh, oh, I guess the only thing is, um, our department is completely moved into temporary city hall. In the, um, Evergreen Pavilion across the street or in the same parking lot as the hospital. We're up on the third floor and went to our offices opening in public, like, next week and a couple of weeks.
I think for us next week, but finance is still here for another week. So we're kind of split, so if you need someone, maybe call and check.
Where they are.
Yeah, where they actually are before you drive there.
So it's, it's gonna be a challenging two years, but we'll get there. I mean, the end result is gonna be something wonderful for the community. And us.
Thanks, everyone.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
During the meeting?
A second, second the motion.
Melanie, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Thanks, everyone, for a good discussion. Appreciate everyone being willing to have a little input.